I'll ask for a roll call.
Jacobson. Fanukin.
Here.
Lash.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Nayler.
Here.
Baker. O'Leary.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Six I.
Thank you. And I have heard from Alderman Baker, does not plan to attend this evening. He's out of town this evening. Moving to our consideration this evening, University Plaza update. I'll turn to City Manager Gora.
Sure, and maybe perhaps Community Development Director Ellen DeVito would like to introduce the folks who are here tonight on behalf of University Plaza.
Good evening, everyone. We are midway through quite a big project. University Plaza was very significant for the city. Last August, August 2014, I guess, final approvals were given to take a two store, a two-building complex from 1,100 rooming house units down to 322 apartments. And it's been a very big success. And so we thought we would bring in the developer. John Chapman is here with a few other folks on his team, including our own local Lisa Sharp and Matthew Deason. I was gonna say, I knew it was D, sorry. Okay? Anyways, they're here to show us some photos. And we just wanted to give you a recap. The south tower received occupancy. Our fire department and Safe Billt really worked overtime very hard to get in and get all the things done that were needed and approved right about spring break time. And right now, they're working on the center building and the north tower. And I'll turn it over to John. Okay?
Appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight. Like Ellen mentioned, I'm John Chapman, Owners Rep for Capstone Real Estate for property located at 900 Crane Drive, University Plaza Apartments. We came before the chamber here several times, I guess, last, second and third quarter of last year, received approval in September, I believe it was, first part of September, for our PDR request. So Ellen's kind of set up here a little bit for me. You know, historically, the property was a 288-unit dormitory-style property, although it was set up for quad occupancy. So it was actually granted closer to 1,100 licenses, operated under a rooming house license historically. Did contain a cafeteria. So our application to the city, which was granted, and again, received in September of last year for the PDR, was for approval of 322 residential dwelling units that contained 496 bedrooms. Roughly one-half of those are single occupancy units, either studios or one bedrooms, and the other half are two-bedroom units. And so as our operation nationwide, we're a student housing, exclusively student housing operator. This is a student-purpose property, and so as such, we do lease by the bedroom, not by the unit. So everyone that resides at University Plaza would have their own lease by the bedroom, would also have a parental guarantor standing behind them as well. So part of our renovation plan, we've deleted the cafeteria function. All renovated apartments will contain their own kitchen, or do contain their own kitchen. Amenities of the property include a very large pool, indoor pool, very nice, very large fitness facility, internet cafe and coffee bar, business center, study and conference rooms, lounge areas, and game room, in addition to some others. So we are very highly amenitized. We think we're the most amenitized in the market. Our bedrooms and units that we lease are also all fully furnished, and you're going to see some examples in the photos tonight of the furnishings there. So our rates that we charge do include furniture, as well as also being all-inclusive of all utilities, which would include cable and internet for each resident as well. Our rates, the question is always asked about rates. So our rates range from, we'll call it, the mid-400s. Again, this is per bedroom. For the smaller units, ranging up to the high 700s for the single occupancy, large one-bedroom units. Our PDR that we've entered into with the city also requires that we do only lease to students. Again, that's our operation. However, our agreement with the city is that all of our residents would have a valid student identification in order to lease from us. So that is in place, and that's the case going forward for all of our fall leases that we've entered into. So like Ellen mentioned, you know, we feel like the project has been very successful to date. We've certainly educated ourselves and learned a long way. Any type of renovation project, there's always a learning curve. This being a very large project condensed into a very short timeframe certainly is no exception. We've learned quite a bit on the south tower, which on the projection here would be the tower on the right side. That was the first tower to be renovated. And again, as Ellen mentioned, we've obtained occupancy on floors two through eight in that tower. We will be achieving occupancy, hopefully be granted occupancy later this month. For the first floor of that tower, our construction activities are occurring now. In the north tower, again, which is the tower to the left on the photo, those activities will conclude in the late July, early August time period, along with the central building renovation activities as well. So while I think it is certainly early in the game for us to do any type of victory lap, I would say currently, the project has been very well received by our prospective residents. Our pre-lease rate for the fall, again, we're leasing now for move-ins in mid-August of this year, we've already obtained, you know, a 99% lease rate. I think we have a handful of bedrooms left to lease, which we feel very, you know, confident at this point we'll be able to achieve those. In addition to the fall leases, we've also leased about 100 bedrooms for the summer session. Those move-ins are actually, will be occurring this Friday. Parking was also a very hot topic, to say the least, during our discussions with the city and before the council here. So maybe to report back on parking, because again, that question always is raised as well. Part of our PDR agreement with the city is that we're, I would call it, virtually restricted in some of our leasing activity in that the city has imposed a restriction on us that if we lease more parking than as anticipated, we would have to potentially construct, or we would definitely have to construct additional parking on the project. It was our contention during the rezoning discussion that we would not cross that threshold. So I could report back to everyone tonight that at our 99% lease rate, we have effectively leased 60% to date of what I'm considering our available parking. So which is not every parking spot that we have on the site, but it's our available spots to lease. We're currently at, actually just south of 60%. So our projection all along was somewhere in the mid-60s to capping out at maybe mid-70s as a take rate on the parking. So, you know, I would say we're certainly trending in that direction. So maybe at this point, I'll ask Lisa Sharp with Sharp Architects, who has assisted us quite well throughout the entire project. Lisa, as you know, is based locally. So I'll let her help walk us through some slides that we brought.
Great. All right. To start out with, in the south building, a couple of shots here of the central first-floor area. As John mentioned, they are still working on the apartment build-out on the first floor, but the common corridor areas, the laundry facilities are all available for residents to use. Upstairs in the resident halls, we have yellow and blue corridors. Can't remember which one. Is it just yellow on the evens? Have less, yellow on the even floors, blue on the odd floors. And I included a old shot of the original hallways there. And that picture, although dark, was pretty accurate for what it felt like as you were going through those floors. So the floors have new drywall ceilings and soffits that enclose all of the utilities and sprinkler system and color coding. Photo on the right is actually of our eighth floor, which does have a drop ceiling and where they also currently have two of our model apartments that they're showing for that last 1% of apartments that they wish to lease. This is one of our one-bedroom apartments. This is fully furnished. Now, I don't think it comes with all of the accessories. You have to bring your accessories and that sort of thing. But we did use the, remodeled the existing bathrooms, so a lot of those fixtures were actually there, and we were able to save those. Small living rooms, looking out this one to the north at the north tower. New kitchens. New bedrooms. So really, another one of the kitchens. Nice, nice, small units. I think a lot of us would have loved to have an apartment this nice when we were going to college. So hopefully, they'll be very happy residents. Another couple of bedrooms. Now, on the outside, they are in the process of finishing out the exterior work on the first floor, where we expanded the footprint out to the original, out to the structure. They're in the process of doing the scratch coat and finish coats on the exterior insulation finish systems. This is along the south facade, which is a little bit further along. And then, moving over to the north tower. North tower is in the process of demolition and construction. This is a shot looking at the first floor underneath as we're trying to remove all of the exterior walls and build it out. We're also having to upgrade the sewer line out to the east, so there's a little bit of site work going on there. In the, I think one of the lessons we learned, because we were abating all of the asbestos, all of the drywall mud had asbestos in it. So every time you remove any drywall, the abatement contractor had to be involved, and it had to be tented and the whole bit. So we were more aggressive about demolition the second time around. So the, I think this might be the eighth floor. Basically, all of the internal walls were all removed, with the exception of the corridor walls. Framing starting. Actually, I think there, we've got drywall going in many of them. So that's where the north tower stands. Now, the central building, this isn't a very sexy picture here, but the fire department probably likes it. We've got new fire proofing going in on the roof of the central building to bring up the fire protection capacity, capability of that building. We're putting in the new elevator. We've got the shaft going in to get down to the basement, which did not, currently just had stairways to the basement. So we did not have accessibility to the pool or any of the amenities in the basement. There's lots of demolition going on. It's a pretty noisy place right now as they're trying to get quarry tile up from the cafeteria. Actually, John mentioned today the abatement here that's tented out in the central area. They just wrapped this up today. So things are getting cleaned up. Framing of the, this is of the business office, the new leasing office, starting up. And I brought along a couple of renderings of the, I don't think you guys had, these were, had been produced when we were last here. So this is a rendering of what that new leasing office is going to look like when it's complete. The new lounge area. So as you come in, there is going to be a new main entry point in the central building. If you've been to the plaza right now, you have to either go kind of around the central building and into one of the links. We're going to have a new bridge, an entry point right in the middle of the building. And this will be the lounge as you come inside the building. New business center, computer work area, fireplace lounge, hanging out on Friday night, fitness center. So it's going to be a fun place. And they're moving along. They've got a lot of work still to do. But I think they're pleased with the progress that's been made, and also pleased with the city and how cooperative the building department's been. It's been a lot of, a lot of coordination and everybody trying hard to help them finish this on time. So, thank you.
Thank you.
If I just may before, and we can open it up if there are any questions or whatever, but I would certainly love to use this opportunity to again echo Lisa's comments regarding our relationship and work with the city to date has just been unbelievable. So to the mayor, I would make sure you understand, from our perspective, we've worked in collegiate markets across the country, and literally the amount of coordination, cooperation, just a can-do attitude that we perceived here from the city of DeKalb has, has just been amazing. So we certainly appreciate the efforts at all levels. That's, you know, Chief Hicks and all of his crew, Safe Billt guys have just been great. It's been a great experience from our perspective.
Good to hear, John. That was going to be one of my questions, if you regretted coming into the project at all.
Not at all, not at all.
No regrets.
Hicks and his crew might, might regret seeing us, but.
The other question I had, Lisa mentioned the, the drywall mud having to be contained for abatement. Were there any other surprises as you got into the structure of the building or into the project?
Sure, sure. You know, anytime you have a renovation project, certainly one of this magnitude, there's always a handful of items. The abatement, any of the remediation action actually was known, that was identified. And so we did know about that. You know, there were not complete plans. We actually had, had pretty good historical plans. But, but there's always some things you find when you, you know, take sheet rock off and open up walls and construction methods that were used back in the 60s that weren't exactly anticipated. Unfortunately, we did experience, you know, a pipe burst event late in the year last year, just as we were ramping up, that, you know, certainly was a hurdle for us to overcome. But, you know, you'll have those type things during construction. So no showstoppers, as of yet, although we still have quite a bit of work to do.
Good to hear. We'll hold our breath. Other questions? Alderman, Snow?
I'm just curious. I know you don't know the leasing rates for sure this fall, but what's, what's more popular, the bigger one-bedroom units or the two-bedroom units?
Well, you have, you know, you have, it's different. You know, there's, there's typically two thoughts that walk in the door. One is, is I want to have a, you know, unit by myself. I want some privacy. Or, you know, they come along with a roommate. And so there's two folks that are happy to share space. Early on, the two-bedrooms seemed to rent more quickly. But then the one-bedrooms, you know, came on strong in the spring. And that's typically the case. When you have two, you know, two roommates, they want to sign early so they know they have their room together. And then the, the one-bedroom folks typically will come in later. So.
Okay. Other discussion questions? No, no. Thank John and Lisa for your presentation this evening. And thank you for investing in DeKalb, John. Appreciate that. All right. I would entertain a motion to recess for executive session of City Council to approve, holding an executive session to discuss personnel as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2 C1, and approval to hold an executive session to discuss pending or imminent litigation as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2 C11.
Mayor, I, I would note that as per the discussion of council at the last meeting, we did list public participation on the agenda. We did not receive any requests for that this evening.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Is there a motion, then, to move to executive session for those two topics?
So?
It's been moved and seconded. I'll ask for a roll call.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Yeah.
Before the vote, is there, should we open up the floor to see if anybody wanted?
We just did that. There was no one registering. Does anyone wish to make a public comment? Thank you. Roll call.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanukin.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Nayler.
Yes.
O'Leary.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Seven I.
Thank you. And our intent is to be back promptly for the six o'clock regular meeting.